So I'll call the meeting to order. This is our Committee of the Whole meeting for August 2nd, 2021. And the Statement of Compliance with Open Meeting Acts. A current copy of this act is available at this meeting. Madam Clerk, can you co-roll, please? Augustine Schulte. Here. Barr.
Here.
Hemmer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Creshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Chair Augustine Schulte, the roll has been called. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to go through fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And Mrs. Vasicek, will you be going through this with us?
Yes. So item 2A, the first item we'll go through is the 1% restricted funds authority increase. This is an annual action. We can go up to 2.5% automatically and with 75% of the council, we can do an extra 1%. I asked Heather for some just stats on that. Last year that raised just under $4,000, $3,918. We have not used that, any of those funds, for quite some time. We've currently got built up about $115,000. So it's really just a safety net in case there's an emergency someday and we need that, those funds. Any questions about the 1%?
Madam Chairwoman, I would recommend that the restricted funds authority be increased by an initial 1% for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or discussion? Okay, let me go ahead and vote then.
It was there for a second.
All right. And see if it's on mine. There we go. Motion passes. Thank you. And the next item then on our agenda is the fee schedule.
Yes. Item 2B, the fee schedule. I'll open up the first attachment there, the fee schedule, and we'll just go through it. If you've looked at it already, you'll see that what is in black is the current fees and what is in red is the new proposed fees. So you can see what it is currently and what the new proposed fees are for those that are recommended to be changed by department heads. So, Janelle, if you want to give my screen, I can. The first changes are on page 6 of the document or page 7 of the PDF, and that's in the cemetery. There is some minor changes. Doug did some comparability with others that operate cemeteries and changed some rates accordingly. The next, if you page down 2, is the community development building permit fees. You'll see a memo attached from Dan Curtis and he, in his memo, he compared building permit fees for a similar size house in some of our comparable communities. And you'll see that we are low on average. So he's went through these fees and did some relatively minor adjustments to the fees. We do our building permit fees based on valuation. Others do square footage, so it's hard to really compare apples to apples. That's why Dan put that memo together. You'll see on the sign permits too. He had a little bit of information in his memo about that. Signs, a little bit of an increase to fence and a little bit of an increase to demo permit. Does anyone have any questions on those?
Do we know how long it's been since we've raised like cemetery fees, building permit fees? It's not been recent.
Well, I, this is my fifth budget and we haven't raised either in my time here. So at least five years.
Yeah, so they're not really out of bounds at all.
No.
Just, I'm just wondering, can you explain a little bit what a sign permit is?
Yeah, anytime there's a sign erected in the community that isn't a yard sign, basically if it's a structure on a wall, yeah, you have to get a permit.
For a homeowner for anything, it's just a business.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Has to be attached. It's not like a laminate sign, like the...
Like a permanent sign. So permanent.
Like if I put something on my door, I don't have to get a permit?
No.
Tara, you had once talked to us about ways to look at funding parks and things. And one idea was building permits.
Yes.
Is that, is that an idea that hasn't reached its maturity yet? Or, I mean, is it still, I'm just wondering where we are.
Yeah, it's an idea that I did bring up, I believe, at our budget meeting last time. And I looked at it more and we, we certainly, we don't have one now and most of our comparable communities do either in their plating process or in their building permit process for park funding. But I didn't recommend that this year simply because we're making the adjustment to the building permit fees. And the, the construction environment right now is, I don't want to, you know, do anything that would be looked upon negatively right now for the city. And I don't, it's not going to generate enough revenue to support the position we were talking about anyway. So just not, I decided not to bring it forward. Community development, the last one there is just for rezoning signs and building moving permits. We're eliminating all the electrical because we never, we do not handle the electrical anymore. That's handled by the state of Nebraska. Community development, also some plumbing, registration fees, just all of them. You can see that, again, Dan went through and compared to other communities and made minor adjustments pretty much across the board to his fees. The one area you'll see is that the nuisance, these aren't brand new fees, the community development nuisance fees. They're moved from the police department fees section to community development. Because if you remember, in the last 12 months, we removed code enforcement from the police department and added it to community development. So that's the reason for that. It's not a new fee, it's just a change from one section to the other. Next is library, some relatively minor changes again, mostly related to the elimination of the bookmobile. As you all know, the Platte County put that, the bookmobile and the library services contract before their constituents and that failed. So we are no longer working with Platte County to provide those services. Next is Park and Rec. So there was some discussion, I want to just clarify. In the memo from Doug attached here, they, he references fees for maintenance of fields and things. And I think a few of you have heard from some particularly ball field club teams. None of those maintenance fees are included in this fee schedule. Park and Rec had a meeting with some of those organizations. And we're going to proceed with scheduling all of the fields like we have talked about before, but we're not going to move forward with as quickly the maintenance of all of the fields. So again, the maintenance fees are not in this fee schedule, but it is anticipated that Park and Rec will bring forward those fees only to be applicable to Gerard and Centennial for this next year. And then we'll work with those organizations to slowly, more slowly, transition into the city maintaining and prepping fields. And I believe that those organizations are good with that. They were most concerned about a too quick of a change and a lag in maintenance. Any questions about that in particular, top, topic you wanted to bring up? The other Park and Rec fees, you can see minor change to football fees for football games at Pawnee and Bradshaw. And then you can see in the stadium marching band festival section, it just eliminates the cancellation postponement and eliminates park board just obviously because you can imagine that park board can't really approve a cancellation of a marching band event if it's happening over the weekend and the weather happened the day prior. So eliminate that. Tennis, a $50 increase per school, per year. Track, again, just a cleanup there. Park and Rec programs. You can see really that the only addition is the pickleball league here. We had previously, before this fee schedule came forward, we'd added a few here. Police Department.
Back to track.
Sure.
Don't we have to have an IT person available for that clock?
We've negotiated that we're not going to have a person available for the track. They're going, the schools are going to have to do that themselves.
But we're turning that over to them?
Correct. And there's private companies that do that. Before we ever had that at our facility, there's a couple of companies in the state.
But who's ever hosting has to pay that fee?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Police Department, an addition of a criminal history fee and the elimination of the alarm permit monitoring. And again, the elimination of those nuisances here because they were moved to community development. And that is the end of the changes in the fee schedule in this document. The only other item I wanted to bring forward was the golf rates. And we had Committee of the Whole about a month ago and we talked about golf. We talked about how it was going to be operated, the pro agreement, all those things. And at that meeting, it was discussed that the city would give the golf pro the authority to set rates at the golf courses. So these rates that I have up on the screen in front of you are from the golf pro. You can see here, we had him add a column that, just the percent change, what he's recommending. Again, this is an FYI, based on the agreement that I've negotiated with Doug and is on the city council meeting for tonight. The agreement says that he has the authority to set the rates. And that's what we had decided at Committee of the Whole. So this is what he is proposing the rates to be and this is what will get incorporated into our rate schedule. Do you have any questions? I, I'm not the best person to ask the questions to, but I can relay them to Doug Dunbar or any, any comments on it?
I think in the past, when, if you had a season pass and there was a tournament, you were allowed to use that pass to pay for your fees. Is he going to still do that, do you know?
I would presume so.
I would ask him not to.
So your season pass covered your tournament entry?
Yeah, I would probably suggest not that.
Shouldn't do that.
I mean, that's...
It's eliminating revenue.
Yeah, well, just a suggestion, but I think if we're looking for places to generate some money.
Right.
So it doesn't look like it's all giveaway. The golf rates look very strange. Is that because of tax?
It's because once you add tax, it's a round number. That was, that concludes the fee schedule unless somebody has particular questions about any of the proposed changes. Charlie?
My only question, I mean, we look at the increase here and it's 28.65, 22.95, 905. And I don't mean to pick on Dan, but you look at Dan's numbers and he's, you know, he's going all the way up from $15 to $16.50 on one permit. Is that enough? It's been five years since we've raised them, is that, I mean?
Well, it's based, the, so you're comparing the, the percent increase in golf to the percent increase in community development, really? And we had this conversation at that Committee of the Whole meeting where Doug Dunbar had previously given me rates like these and wanted the city to propose them. And I said, I can't propose those rates because every time we do rates at the city, it's based on comparability. And the rates that he gave me don't compare well to other municipal golf courses. So that's why we kind of had that discussion. And now we're giving him the latitude to set the rates to see if we can, you know, get closer to our goal. But with community development, I, I said to Dan, look at comparability. I don't think we want to be more expensive than our comparable communities with permits. So that's why it is what it is.
Because everything there seems extremely reasonable.
Yes. It is. And we, we want to keep it reasonable, but not be so, not be the cheapest. But we still are going to be on the lower end.
Okay. Tara, I see that all of the nuisances were lined out. Are, do they appear somewhere else?
Yep, they were moved to community development.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, I'm going back to golf rates. Do we define someplace where winter rates commence and winter rates cease?
In the fee schedule, I believe there is language about the months that those rates apply. I can page through here real quick and find it.
It's December, January and February. December, January and February.
You have to bring your own snow shovel to...
It says, on page 25, it says winter rates December 1 through March 31st. It is in there print.
Okay, thanks.
Orange balls and snow shovels, all right. I got it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? We need a motion then to recommend the schedule of fees.
I'm moved.
Second.
Did it pass? Sorry, my screen's up. I moved.
Oh, I was waiting for a vote yet. We got it now, so it should come up here. Go. And our motion passes. The next item we have for discussion is the pay plan.
Item 2C, the pay plan. What I have attached here in the pay plan reflects a 5% increase. We talked about this at Committee of the Whole. I added on the screen here, you'll see the cost of living adjustment. I added June, since we had that budget hearing. June just exacerbated the, the issue we were dealing with. So, and the average is about 4.5% of other communities. What other communities are looking to do for a cost of living adjustment. So I, I, like I said, for the pay plan, I did a 5% adjustment. You can see here that the average, and this is how we've done it every year. We always try to get as close to this number as we can, the 8.68. But that is a little steep. So 5% I think is reasonable and obviously justifiable, but questions or comments? And again, this, a 5% adjustment to the general fund is about $444,000 over the course of a fiscal year. And to the enterprise funds, you can see individually by fund what that cost is, a 5% adjustment. Today's pay versus a 5% increase. It is substantial, but when you employ, you know, 200 people and swell to 300 and some during the season, the high season, that is why.
I think one of the things to point out is you, you know, you highlighted how we always try to, the goal is to try to go with the other communities and stay close. I don't think you're going to see too many of the other communities go to 8 or 9% either. So I mean, you know, I mean, this is a unique year. Those numbers came in extremely high.
It is. It's a very unique year. And, you know, the hope is, it doesn't happen very often, but I wonder, you know, the 12 CIPs after June, when we talk about this next year, if we'll see a very low number. Hopefully, then we don't have to be good for everybody.
Well, Madam Chairman, I would recommend that the pay plan for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, council members, you may go ahead and vote then. All right, and every, the motion passes. Our next item is the capital improvement plan.
I will pull up the first attachment you have there, the capital improvement list. It has all of the capital improvement projects in one document. But there is the other attachment that has an individual worksheet for each of the CIP items. If you want more detail on them after the meeting, just know that you can go there and look at that. But we'll go through this document. Okay, so I've got this open here in the general administration. We have a downtown study, $38,000. That's a quote from a firm that we use. Again, we cannot continue to get downtown grant funds, I'm told by DED, unless we update our study for downtown. And our study is, was finished in 2012, so they consider that out of date. Second is a housing study. The total, it's a housing study update. The total cost of that is $10,000, but we got a grant for $5,000. And North, or Neighbor Works Northeast is contributing 1,000. So our 4,000 will go to Neighbor Works Northeast and they will facilitate that housing study update. And they'll incorporate, you know, the chamber housing committee, city staff, everybody that's involved in the housing projects. Number three is the FEMA hazard mitigation brick grant. That is $250,000 total. If we are granted, 25% of that will be funded by city sales tax, about $62,500. The FEMA buyout program, both the 3 and 4 were in last, or current fiscal year's budget as well. But I just got an email today that we got FEMA approval on the buyout program. So we will actually be spending this money this year. And that is for four properties down on Highway 30 that were impacted by the 2019 flood. If you drive by them, you'll know which ones they are. They have not been touched since the flood, really. So those will get cleaned up here in the next 12 months, hopefully, that we have FEMA approval. And our share of that is the $163,000. There's 75% from FEMA, the county's putting some in and the lower loop NRD is putting some in as well.
And Tara, I think it's important to point out that when those get cleaned up, then they have specific uses designated to them. You can't rebuild there. If you do anything there, it's got to be done a certain way.
Right.
Because of the, being in the flood plain.
Right. And we still...
The whole purpose of this was to not have this happen again to properties that are in that area.
Exactly. And we still have to work out some of the particulars, like we're contributing to this, but does the city want to own the land afterward and maintain the land? Not, I don't, wouldn't think, not really, because you can't really do anything with it. The NRD has expressed some interest in making it, you know, recreation space if they can get enough land, you know, together in one location. So we're still working on what the land looks like after the cleanup is done. But that will all come back before you in the next 12 months, once we get it determined.
Environmental issues.
We'll have to deal with that. And that's all been part of the project that we've submitted. We have been working with JEO and the county, so there's, there's consultants involved. They've inspected the property. They've done their assessments and appraisals and everything. So if that happens, we'll have to work through the FEMA process. The next...
Briefly, briefly, can you do, give me a, an update on what the ownership options are for these properties? Who, who's, what are the options to this point, briefly?
Of who would own them after they're cleaned up?
Yes.
There's really limitless options. It could be a joint public agency. It could be the county, it could be the NRD, it could be the city. It could be anything we, that's, that's lawful. Anybody participating in the program or any, we could gift it to somebody, you know, based on, as long as they maintain it in a certain way. We could sell it as long as they maintain it in a certain way. It's kind of like the properties that the city has that BNSF used to own. We have these restrictions on what can go on there for perpetu, in perpetuity. So it'll be the same if FEMA dollars participate in the cleanup of these properties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 5 is the fiber optic network. This is the second phase of the fiber system. We built the first phase a couple of years ago. So again, in that second attachment, there's more details about what this all connects. But basically, it's a secondary loop. It would get the transfer station, the wastewater treatment plant, Quail Run, Pawnee Park, those sorts of things. You know, later on in the CIP sheet, there's cameras at Pawnee Plunge and the Pawnee Park parking lot and throughout Pawnee Park. We can't do that without fiber out there in a good, in a economical way. Item 6 is, yes.
And, yeah, chair in the budget. Is, would you be able to stretch fiber optic into broadband under the American Rescue?
You, we probably could, but we can talk about that now that we're here. We have those water and wastewater extension projects that more than eat up the ARPA funds. And I was on a conference call last week and the governor was on and he, the way the ARPA funds work, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed, you know, a couple of months ago. We are getting, supposed to be getting 50% of that $3.9 million here soon and the other 50% a year later. And Governor Rickett said, do not count on the second half. He does not think that locals, that municipalities will get the second half. So really, we're looking at less than $2 million. And those sewer and water extension projects, just the city portion of them will be well in excess of $2 million. So, and it's best, it's my recommendation to keep it as clean as possible because it's going to be like a full federal oversight project. So if we start divvying up that money into multiple projects, it's just going to be a headache to manage them. So if we can keep it in one project, that will be the best for us cost-wise and for us to manage it.
I would agree with that. And I think it's important to point out, the governor's point for not getting the second round of this is because Nebraska's doing so well and has recovered so well.
Right.
He doesn't think we will qualify in the eyes of our federal government.
Right.
So sometimes, sometimes when you're good, it doesn't help, you know?
Would we be able to save anything on that fiber if we were to somehow piggyback off of the company that's doing it for ALO?
So we worked with Bauer Underground for our first phase two years ago. And we did do some things in that project, like we allowed them to lay other conduit for, to sell or things like that. So we'll definitely write it so that we can do that. But this phase isn't as big as the first phase either. We did kind of see some economy of scale things on that first project that we will try our best to realize on phase two as well. Number six is just miscellaneous IT expenses that always come up, new servers, that sort of thing. Number seven is Eagleview pictometry upgrades. That's an annual cost that we use to update ortho images that we use for a variety of things, like printing maps that continue to turn yellow. that we use for a variety of things, like printing maps that continue to turn yellow. But our, our lucidity system, all those sorts of things. Item eight is the city hall relocation. So this is part of the new community building project. The sales tax portion is $345,000, but the total, we expect throughout this next fiscal year is about $5 million. But we have those bond proceeds that we will utilize. Item nine is the one item we have in here for Columbus Area Transit, and that's a new fuel card system for $30,000. Item 10 is entryway, entryway renovation at the community center. And that's $30,000 of sales tax and $20,000 of grant funds. Item 11 is a commercial refrigerator at the community center, senior center, for $5,000. Item 13, the police department radio improvements, $150,000. This will finish out getting those mobile devices in all of our police department vehicles that need it. Item 14 is a phone and computer forensic software for the police department. 15 is the fingerprint fuming hood. 16, copier. 17 through 20 are vehicles that we do every year to stay on top of condition. And item 21 is the body worn and in-car cameras and a server to support all of that data that will be gathered. Fires department. Item 22 is the Charlie Lewis addition repair. It's about $1.6 million. And that will be paid for with cash from the half percent sales tax. Item 23 is the radio communications. This is broken into three parts. So $83,000 for year one, and the next two years. The T-Rex aerial refurbishment, replace, and replacing all hydraulic hoses for $60,000, training tower concrete. At the airport, it's $20,000, battery-powered ventilation fans to replace the gas for $5,000. Rescue, we have, item number 28 is a Lucas CPR device for $15,000. Number 29 is a Station Two extraction tools, extrication tools, excuse me. Item 34, power stair stretchers. Item 31, mobile data computers for four ambulances. And number 32 is ambulance that we had previously talked about. It is not included here. I am waiting on some information from Dan about Chief Miller, about remount of that potentially. So we'll see if I, if I get that information, I may include it here. But also, ambulances take a long time, too. So if we don't put anything in here, and we expect that we'll put it in for next year, maybe we come forward with a council action to start the process of getting an ambulance going and put it in next year's budget. So just because it's not in here doesn't mean we can't start moving forward with something, once we know more. Item 33 is the new library building. Again, the $99,167 is the payment, the minimum payment for the, on the certificates of participation. And the total cost, we anticipate this next fiscal year for that building is around $15 million between construction, construction oversight, furniture, equipment, all those sorts of things that will be really ramping up in this next fiscal year. Item 34.
Excuse me for a second. How is the Library Foundation proceeding on their portion of the?
Sure. I can answer to, you know, what I know. And then if you have more questions, I can bring Karen up. But the Library Foundation's goal was $8 million before, about when this project passed, they had about $5 million in hand. And since that time, I know they've raised about 1.5 more. So they're about 1.5 short at this point, if you wanna say short. But there's, there's major foundations that they're talking to right now. So they anticipate they'll surpass their $8 million goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tara, I have a question, too. If I could back up to number 22, the Charlie Lewis station.
Yep.
When is it possible the renovation could start on that station?
Right. So we are, right now, they're finalizing design, and then they'll bid. So we're really looking at best-case scenario, a late fall start. And could work through the winter potentially, depending on how much they get done in the fall. But I wouldn't expect that it really ramps up until the spring.
Spring, okay. Thank you.
So we, we have city hall portion of the building, and you're calling new library building, but you speak nothing about the museum. So is that included in the library cost?
Everything is included in the library cost, except city hall.
Okay, so we're calling it, why are we calling it library then? Why don't we call it community center like we've called it?
Because it's part of the library budget. It's in the CIP. It's referenced as the community building project. But here, it's just new library building. But yeah, everything is this number, this library number, except city hall.
Okay, so, so they're, okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions before I move along? Item 34 is addition to the current maintenance shop for cemetery at $250,000. I've gotten quite a few questions about this one, so I'm just going to explain that the original request, department head request for this was an $800,000 new building, new maintenance shop. And we discussed and decided that an addition to their current space would be more fiscally responsible and more palatable to the community and to the city council. So that's why this is in here. Any questions or comments about that? Item 35 is armor coating the roads. We did not include that. Item 52 is a mower. Then we jump down to parks. So Pawnee Park baseball field lights. We put in $150,000 of sales tax funds, and then $50,000 of grant funds, so that's 200. So it's up in the air right now, what the lights would cost in total. I've seen 280, I've seen 500, I've seen 300 and some. So we put some money in here so that the project could move forward. That's my thinking and discussion with others. But I have gotten lots of questions about this one on both sides. So $150,000 is what I'm proposing max for sales tax.
My, my feeling is, is that, you know, we've got a dire need of lighting. And if we're gonna spend $125,000 for lights on the viaduct, then, you know, I think it's ridiculous that we have to set aside the baseball field lights. We have an opportunity next year to get the Class A state, or Class B state tournament and a Class A area tournament. But we can't get it unless we have lights.
Yeah.
So I would, I would like to, I would like to say, you know, that we need to put $200,000 with a $50,000 grant.
So there's been a couple of things here. The viaduct hasn't had lighting for years. It has been out of lighting for years, and I get what you're saying. There is lighting at Pawnee Park baseball field now. I, I understand. I'm, part of the, I think, concern is that there is a, a very large project looming with Columbus Public Schools, where they're talking about building multiple fields. And before I even got here, five years ago, the city of Columbus was talking about giving a million dollars to that project. So I just wonder strategically if we're, we're in a place where we should make decisions to invest that kind of money in an older facility, if we have new facilities on the horizon that could fill the gap and fill the need that we have. So that's real, that's kind of my thinking. And also, I don't, yeah, I don't know what the strategic vision is for the park and rec system. If it's always to maintain that field as what it is now, or if it's to put multiple fields in a location in the future. I just wouldn't wanna sink hundreds of thousands of dollars into a field that we're not using to its full potential in five years.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a long time, I, you know, before that, if the high school does anything. Because they're looking at, you know, an $8.5 million project, you know, and, and, and we've got something out here that is very, very good, and it's used. I, I just, you know, I just can't believe that, that you're wanting to just set it aside and just let it go to pot.
I never said that, Ron.
Well, that's basically what you're saying is that-
No, I didn't.
You don't wanna do anything with the field, with the lights, you know? So that's, that's where, you know, I, I just-
No, I, I think, I think what the city administrator is recommending is that we have a, a set amount to begin with right here. I mean, it's there to start the process, to get the, you know, really get homework. Like she said, we've heard 200,000, we've heard 400,000. Let's find out what a really solid bid would be. Right now, there's 150 and a, and a grant, so there's 200,000 committed. And like anything else on this budget, any of these items still comes back to us for further discussion, further approval, further stamps of approval to get anything done. So I mean, I think Tara's opened the door here to say, this is a potential project. We've got some funding committed. Is it where we wanna be as we get all the information gathered?
So these lights could, if, if, for instance, they were able to get some more funding, and it was 80,000 that they committed, and it, and it ended up being the city needed to put forth another 20,000, you're saying we would be able to do that?
Well, I'm saying it would come to us to say, do we wanna do that? Like, you know, we just had a discussion about an ambulance, that, you know, we may wanna follow up and start making plans, but if it's not in the budget, we can make it part of, say yes to it, and then get it in next year's budget, because that's when it comes together. That's all I'm saying.
And this was also brought up to the park board, and the park board, they initiated $200,000 for their, their system, so.
Looking forward, you could, you could probably move those lights, couldn't you, if you, if it appeared that- we, we build a new facility?
Those lights are, those lights are, are, no, he's saying, we put in new ones.
Oh, new ones. Yeah, I mean, they could go to the next field, couldn't they, if, if that, and use that for daylight games only?
Yes, you could. You could use them. I, I can't, I can't see us not ever using that ball field.
Oh, I don't, I can't, it's overused right now.
And, and that's, that's the thing. It just, you know, and it, and it's also, the situation is, that we have got it set up, is that, you know, we got a 25-year guarantee on it, a warranty. Anything happens, goes wrong, or whatever, we don't pay for it. I mean, it's taken care of. And, and these are LED lights. We, I coach with, with, with the Lakeview group, and we play in, in the small communities. But I tell you what, we are down, we're down in the bottom level right now, as far as our, our field facility is concerned. So.
Ron, hasn't the baseball, is this 50,000 what the baseball association is proposing?
That's what we got as far, yes.
It's a, it's a Columbus Visitors Bureau grant.
Yeah, that's a grant.
Baseball Association.
Yeah, that's a grant.
Good, put in. Weren't they gonna make some donations?
Well, we have to, if we have to do it, we, we would have to go out and, and we've got, we've got a couple of banks that'll work with us. And, you know, they'll loan us some money. But, you know, as we, as, as an organization, are we gonna sign our, our name to, to, to the loan? And, you know, they're, they're willing, they're willing, more than willing to help us. And, and I've got a meeting with, with the, with the Musco people coming in on the 13th of, of this, of this month. And they're gonna show us what we can do and how we can maybe manage it, get it in, and, and at a cost that's reasonable.
Okay, good, good. Keep us posted, would you? Keep us informed?
Oh, yeah.
I, I personally, personally would like to see some facts and figures on the lighting system as it exists. The, how, how, how mu, how much the field is used in the evening, how much the lighting's used, how much do things cost? All I've heard at this point is, it's antiquated. And I'd like to see some actual facts and figures on what's the level of lighting, how efficient are we? Is it costing us $100,000 a year to light the field? When we put in LEDs, it'd cost us $10,000 a year. I think we need to do some homework, at least for me, prior to spending any money. This is a reasonable start, but let's get some facts and figures together before we go off on a tangent.
So Doug has, somebody coming to town on Friday, I believe. Right, Doug?
No, it's next week, but yeah.
Next week.
13th.
To look at things like that. So I'm sure they'll be able to tell us more of those facts and figures.
Thank you.
One, one of the things that they told us is that is, with the lighting we have, we could save 60% of our cost when we turn the lights on.
Now, is it 60% of 100,000? Is it 60% of 150,000, or a?
Whatever our costs, whatever, whatever our costs are.
You know, if our cost is $1,000 a year, 60% of that doesn't make a, make a big difference. If it's $100,000 a year, it makes a big difference. That's, yeah, thank you.
Brent, I do have all the questions that you asked, that you sent. I have those. I started to work on those, so I'll have, I'll have answers for you.
Next item, 39, Pawnee Park camera system. So this would be for the plunge, the Pawnee Park parking lots, and all the entrances to Pawnee Park. Item 41 is drainage and concrete issues at Gerard Park. Item 42, Pawnee Park paving, South Aramada. This is just a note here that we need to include those sorts of things in the pavement management program priority list. I believe there's priorities that outweigh this in our streets, in our roadways outside of the park. So I doubt that will happen this year. Item 43 is not included. That's a Centennial improvement, along with item 44. Item 45 is armor coating three parking lots in our park system for 80,000. Item 46 is the Powerhouse Trail Phase One. So that's a $490,000 project in total. And the city's portion is $132,000. The rest is Nebraska Game and Parks grants and other grants that the city has received. Item 47 is bleacher shade covers at Centennial. Item 48, high jump and pole vault pit replacement at Memorial Stadium. Item 49 is a six-foot-zero turn mower. Any question, other questions on parks?
Which three parks for the armor coating?
That has not been exactly determined. Doug, do you have an idea what that might be?
It'd be Bradshaw, Centennial, and Gerard.
The most heavily used.
Correct.
Next apartment is the Pawnee Plunge. So there's cameras here, so between this and the number above. And then item 53 is a family slide for $100,000. Aquatic center, LED lighting for the pool deck, and armor coating their parking lot and striping their parking lot. Then we jump down to golf courses, Vanberg, so fertilizer spreader. And, and Quail Run, there's the finishing up of the flood damage repair, and 10 golf carts. Item 63, starting off the street department, 33rd Avenue viaduct uplighting. So that is, that we have already started that project. This amount is to finish it off next fiscal year. Item 64 is school and pedestrian crossing improvements. Item 66, subdivision or miscellaneous improvements, $275,000. We have that in every year to cover the portions of infrastructure improvements that by our local code, we contribute to. So that's upsizing in pavement, water, sewer mains, that sort of thing. Item 67 is our citywide annual pavement program. So that's $2.5 million. Item 68 is East 14th Avenue. That is Phase Two of that project. And we'll be using our highway allocation funds for that. Item 69, ADA improvements. Item 70, 23rd Street and 48th Avenue. Again, that's Phase One of a three-phase project. Item 71, that's Highway 30, the major reconstruction project that will start next fiscal year. The 146 is the bond payment, because last meeting, we approved the bond, the TIF notes. So that is the payment on that. So that is the payment on that. Um, the track skid loader for a hundred and thirty-five. The, excuse me, or that was a four-by-four tractor. And then seventy-three is a track skid loader for fifty-four, electronic aero board for six thousand. And we continue to use our electronic boards more and more to up our communication when we have roadway projects, closures, that sort of thing. So we are in need of another one.
Just an aero.
Yeah.
It'd be like any others.
I believe it's a message board.
Great.
Mm-hmm. Item seventy-five, ten thousand gallon brine storage tank at, um, central maintenance. Item seventy-six and seventy-seven and seventy-eight are all, um, snow removal equipment. Item seventy-nine, eighty are not included here. Item eighty-one, the Loop River Levy's recertification. And then item eighty-two, overhead crane in the shop. Item three is the downtown grade separation study that we've entered into a contract with Olson a couple meetings ago. So that process has started. Item eighty-four is, um, inspection on the levee. Item eighty-five, the SRE building restroom, I did not include that, but I did include eighty-six and eighty-seven, the aerial applicator, um, aerial applicator plan update and the hangar fourteen oh six repair.
Can we go back real quick?
Sure.
Excuse me, thank you, and go back to the, um, uh, signal upgrade on the Lost Creek Parkway Wilderness.
Sure.
What all is in that item?
Well, it's my understanding, and Rick, I might have you pipe in, the wilderness, so Eighteenth Avenue and Lost Creek Parkway, it's not a, it doesn't, uh, recognize traffic like Thirty-third Avenue and, um, Lost Creek Parkway or other, it's like Thirty-third and Thirty-eighth Street. They recognize when traffic is there, so their timing changes accordingly, but Eighteenth Avenue is just on a timer. So to upgrade it, so it recognizes traffic and is more sophisticated is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We don't have many complaints about Eighteenth Avenue and Lost Creek Parkway at this point.
Thank you.
I have a question too.
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to find out where we are with that thoroughfare study for Eighth Street.
It's completed.
Okay, so, but we had, so, I mean, it was up there a little way.
Right, so we had.
Have not, it's, it's, the study is completed, but what is going to happen next?
What the one-point-four million dollars is, is phase one implementation, like constructions. So that would be starting to put in the recommended roundabouts, the mini roundabouts at those key intersections. I did not, and, ooh, I did not include that here, um, because we have, as you can see, almost six million dollars of, um, other commitments that are, take a higher priority, I believe, at this point. Um, but that will probably come next year.
Okay, so there's not going to be anything done this year with Eighth Street this year then?
Correct, we did the, um, no construction implementation over the last couple of months, and that was, you know, some re-striping in the four-way stop signs at Eighth and Third. So we did those sorts of no cost or minimal cost, um, changes that the study recommended, but beyond that, it's considerable construction cost.
So was the stud, maybe I'm going too far off here, but the study went, was the final decision to do the roundabouts?
That was the final recommendation, to do many roundabouts.
From the citizens in the study or from the study or?
From the feedback, from the engineering study, and then that came before you guys and you approved that final study.
Okay.
And we talked about all the options.
Because we approved the study, we approved that.
Well, that was the final recommendation, I mean, if you don't want to move forward with that, that's your, that's your prerogative. Um, but that is what the engineering facts say, and that was the most, um, popular choice. It, it did, it probably was the most polarizing as well, um, but, but it was the most, um, recommended.
Now, I've got two questions.
Sure.
Uh, since we're talking about the roundabouts, I guess everybody probably knows I'm against them, but I'd like to ask the fire chief, what do you think about these roundabouts, going through them with a fire truck, the long fire truck?
It can be troublesome, I know, I've went through many of them in, in my previous position, and they put a lot of them in a line now. And it's, it's troublesome, especially with the aerial trucks and things like that. Um, it would really depend on how big they are and how wide the thoroughfare is.
Yeah, how big they make the intersection, yep. My next question was if we could back up on the, the repair on the, uh, on, uh, Quail Run, uh, is any of that covered by FEMA?
Yep, that is twenty-five percent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are we planting grass yet?
Well, they were supposed to plant grass starting today, right?
Uh, we were supposed to start planting grass last week, but then, uh, with the hot weather, we had load control, so they kind of put the stops to that, cause they couldn't irrigate, so hopefully this week we'll start seeding.
So we're not planting grass yet?
Hopefully do.
There's some sods.
Some today and, and yeah. Sod's down.
Around the greens.
We're not planting grass seed yet.
No.
So don't go out and buy a new club yet.
Never mind, never mind.
You tell me which location fourteen oh six is for the hangar and what those repairs may be?
I know what the repairs are, I don't know, I don't have a map, I can explain it perfectly. Um, the, basically the concrete outside of the hangar and the concrete inside the hangar, it's deflecting and it's breaking up, and it's creating issues for vehicles, aircraft to go in and out of the hangar, over the over, with the overhead door. Mm-hmm. Any other questions before I move on? Okay, item, um, or we'll move on to the JCC here. Um, these are all funded, as you know, through the county and their levee, so, um, tower radio equipment contingency, AVL mapping, uh, that's automatic vehicle location mapping. Um, backup positions, um, for the JCC. Any questions about those? And again, those have gone through the Ju- the Joint Communications Committee and Platte County, so, um, they'll be in our budget though because we are the fiscal agent for the JCC. Enterprise funds, wastewater collection, we have, um, the Twenty-third Street, um, project, so there's a portion of that that's paid here, as you know, the TIF didn't cover a hundred percent of the city's requirement for the Twenty-third Street reconstruction. Then we have the North Sanitary Sewer Collection System Improvements. Again, we were, um, have been told that we would get three-point-nine in ARPA funds. But again, we'll probably get fifty percent of that just based on, um, conversations had and the lack of need in Nebraska. So, um, we will adjust our budget accordingly, probably before it comes back for final approval. Um, lift stations, those are, um, moving forward, I think a pre-con was last week. Lift station renovations, this is our normal, um, or lift station renovation, this is designed only for the next major lift station reconstruction. And then we have our annual system CIP lining for a hundred and fifty thousand and a CCTV, um, transporter and camera, fifty-five. Wastewater treatment, updating the SCADA system for fifty, um, dry incubator, a forklift, and then UV bulbs and sleeves at the wastewater treatment facility. The water department, got Highway Thirty, again, the portion of that project that is water improvements, three hundred and twenty thousand. Water extension design and construction, that's over on Eighteenth. Fifteenth Street Water Main Reconstruction from Twenty-third to Twenty-seventh Avenue. And then the repainting of fire hydrants for thirty-six thousand. The three-million-gallon storage tank rehab, a hundred and fifty thousand, and replacing unit number forty-three, um, the van for thirty thousand. I, uh, stormwater utility, excuse me. The first is, um, to create or construct regional stormwater facilities, a hundred and fifty thousand. We just recently, in the last couple of meetings, um, signed an agreement for our first, construction of our first regional stormwater system, um, out by Armory, the Armory Frontier Park. So those are moving forward, and then we have flood evaluation, fifty thousand dollars, and trunk line cleaning. So trunk line, storm sewer cleaning, mm-hmm.
Tara, your Fifteenth Street Water Main Extensions goes from Twenty-third to Twenty-seventh, that pretty much finishes Fifteenth Street.
It does.
Is there going to be a new block top and?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Concrete.
Concrete.
Excellent, even better.
That's moving, yeah. Even better.
That sounds better.
Yes, that will wrap up the Fifteenth Street improvements.
The trees are removed, were they our cost to remove those?
The trees on Fifteenth Street that were in the right of way.
Well, you talking about SCOTUS's trees?
Yeah.
SCOTUS did that.
They did it.
For the project, those were our costs, but that was outside of the project.
It was, okay.
Cause it isn't, my understanding is SCOTUS is gonna make a drop-off lane similar to what St. Buns has further to the east there in front of, in front of.
Yeah.
Or parallel park.
Or a combination of both, or something like that's last I heard, yes?
Okay, um, next is the transfer station, and we did not include any of those capital requests in this year's budget cause there, it's an enterprise fund again, and there's not enough profit to do those items, so we'll have to wait till next year. So that is the capital items for next fiscal year that we're recommending. This is, um, we don't need a motion on this. It will come back before the city council in a budget hearing, but if you have any final comments, questions?
So in simple, in simple math, staff requested thirty-one million eight hundred and eight thousand dollars worth of items.
Mm-hmm.
That got whittled down or prioritized down to nine-point-five million dollars. Is that a way to look at the, I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for, and I know some of those things are a couple of years out, so it's not just like, well, this is what we all want this year.
Right.
But.
Well, um, several requests are in here that were early on, so, um, but, and that nine-point-two is just the one percent sales tax. So really, there's, in this sheet, there's about thirty-two million dollars of requests. And between all of the funding sources on this sheet, one percent sales tax, half percent sales tax, ARPA funds of almost four million dollars, that is a big deal. Um, and then highway allocation and FFPP money, so those are street funds of about, um, three-point-one million. That's a total of twenty-nine, the, in the grand total, total, if you see there across the bottom. So we were able to do most of what's on this sheet, but again, this is cleaned up from our original request, there are some things not listed here. But we're able to do quite a lot for, with the, all the resources that we have, grant funds, all of those sorts of things. Any other final questions or comments on capital?
I, I just want to say, commend the staff for the work they've done on it and for taking in all, into consideration all the requests and still keeping the budget in a good place. Thanks for your work, Tara.
Yeah, no problem. So on item two E, if we're ready to move on, I'm, I'm not going to open that first attachment that's titled Budget Overview because it's, if you want to go through that and you have specific questions, it's really just showing you the revenue and expense for every single fund that we have. So, um, if you notice something in there that you have questions on and you want to really get in the weeds on it, I'd recommend emailing me and Heather and we can do that. But, um, the capital is really what changes the budget year to year, and then the change in the cost of living. So the other line items in our budget really don't change that much, cause we pull out, even in this capital sheet, you saw some things that were less than five thousand dollars, which is our capitalization number. And that's because I want them pulled out because they changed those operating lines. So, um, really that sheet you saw is all the significant changes to the budget. Um, so since we've gone through that, um, you should have a good understanding of why any of those lines in the budget overview have changed. So I will open up this budget report, the memo that Heather has prepared. Um, oh, wrong one, whoops. The budget overview is the memo, the budget report is the one that is all the information you can review later if you want. So budget overview, um, again, this is a big picture look at last year's budget. We had about ninety-nine, was about ninety-nine million, proposed budget for this year is about a hundred and fourteen. The mass majority of that change or all of that difference is the new community building project. If you remember, that's about twenty million dollars in this budget, um, of difference. So that eats up the majority of that change. Um, proposed budget has about fifty million dollars of capital items, as compared to last year was about just under thirty million. Again, mass majority of that difference or increase is those one-time expenses for this new community building project that was voter-approved. The property taxes, the biggest, um, thing that you probably all want to know is this budget is built based on the same levy that we have now. There is no recommended changes to the property tax levy. Um, we do not know what the final valuation numbers are, we won't get that from the Platte County assessor until August twentieth. That is his deadline and that is when we will get it and not a day sooner. Um, so we deal with that. Um, but we do anticipate, uh, an adj- a significant adjustment, I don't know, three, maybe three percent, three and a half percent. Um, but we'll make those final adjustments to the budget based on that, and that will come before you in that budget hearing. Sales tax, um, it's just gives you kind of a history of what we've been doing with our sales tax, so no, no new information there. And other, our other receipts, we've received some COVID funds, all those sorts of things. Um, any questions that you guys have on this, this memo?
Yeah, I have a question. Approximately, how much do we take in a year in sales tax?
Sure, it's right here, so, um.
Nine million?
Mm-hmm. Between the two, it's about eight, ooh, excuse me, I'm gonna, I don't want to, eight-point-seven.
Okay, and has that been more or less going up every year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's taken a pretty significant jump this, um, last fiscal year, and we would assume that most of that is because of online sales tax remittance starting. Okay.
Tara?
Yes.
In the property tax section of this, um, uh, from Heather,
Mm-hmm.
you had a couple of, well, one particular statement and then an example, uh, and you brought this up before, but, uh, you said the numbers, once you get the numbers from the st- uh, county, will be adjusted to keep the levy rate the same and compute the calculation on the amount of property taxes attributable to growth within the city of Columbus. And then you come down with a, an example, a hundred thousand dollar home, it was last year, and three hundred and fifteen dollars in taxes, and next year it's going to also be three hundred and fifteen dollars in taxes.
Mm-hmm.
So, you, what, you're going to have to, I, I don't understand how you can do that, uh, because the value of that house, uh, I'm just bombarded with people that are having houses go up two, three, four hundred percent.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, but I, and I always tell them, I said, don't get excited until you find out what the levy is. Well, if the levy stays the same, but their value, their house is up three hundred percent, how does that relate to this example of the, uh, property tax being three fifteen?
Yeah, I don't know whose property value is going up, assessed value is going up three hundred percent. Cause we hear through the grapevine, on average, it's going to be three and a half at best, is what we're hearing the adjustment will probably be. So best case scenario, that means our revenue from property tax only would go up three and a half percent. So it's not going up, it, it doesn't make, what they're saying and what's actually happening isn't correct, isn't the same. I, I understand.
Very well could be.
And I understand what you're saying, I mean, I- And I understand what you're saying. I mean, I, if my home is worth a hundred thousand dollars last year and this year it's worth a hundred and fifty thousand and your levy's the same, I'm gonna be paying twice as, you know, one and a half times as much as I was. And I get that, but um our services and our costs are obviously going up as well. So if we lower and maintain, continue to charge the same amount and not take in growth. But yet we're growing and our services are growing and our costs are growing, the gap's just gonna get bigger and bigger.
Now, you're preaching to the choir here, but uh at, at the same time, I, I guess I just can't figure out how they could, the, the amount of taxes paid on this house remain the same if the valuation went up.
Well, in this scenario, the valuation didn't go up.
Okay, so the valuation stayed the same, even though the chances are, you know, the scuttlebutt is, is three and a half percent up.
The, yes, this example is assuming any hundred thousand dollars of valuation, they pay three hundred and fifteen dollars in city sales tax. Whether that was, I mean, if it grows next year to a hundred and fifty thousand, they're gonna be paying, you know, five hundred and some odd dollars because their valuation, because their assessed valuation went up. But every hundred thousand dollars of valuation pays three hundred and fifteen dollars. So if their assessed evaluation grows, you just times that, right? Divided by a hundred times this, that's how we come up with it. So they're gonna be paying more.
Wasn't considered in this example.
No, because we don't know what the difference in valuation is going to be.
You know, and you read the same things I do, where nationally, uh home prices are, are hitting peaks everywhere. And, and people, uh now, now the, the offer for homes is as much as a million dollars over the asking price. And uh, you know, those things seem so, so skewed from what you know, seems to be a very, a fairly tranquil situation here. I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what the numbers are.
It will be interesting, and we can certainly say, okay, the average, the growth was three and a half percent. So a hundred thousand dollar home would now be valued at this if they were at the average, so their taxes would grow by this amount. We could do that once we know what the growth rate is.
And of course, we're only looking at our part of the property tax.
Right.
The school can do a lot of other things that might inflate what the property owner actually pays.
And I would, I would like to add that the county's levy is about the same as our levy and they don't provide any of the services that we provide. You know, we provide fire, police, street, snow removal, park and rec, library, all of these cemeteries. All of these facilities we just talked about, and we collect about the same in property taxes the county does, within the city limits.
I mean, I, I think there's, we all get, we all get asked the question, you know, I mean, values are going up, property values are going up. We keep the value, we keep the levy at the same, we always have. Well, you're, you're kidding, you're kidding us, is what they say, because we're still paying more in taxes. And, and I don't argue that, and I don't mean it that we're kidding them, because we know you're paying more in taxes. The point being, as these, as the values have gone up on homes, it's the equivalent values that have gone up on the services that we are asked to provide the citizens. So we have to provide the citizens those same services in this inflationary time. Now, if we wanna take away some of those services, that's when we would start talking about the opportunity to take away or reduce a levy.
Right.
The city is growing, growing by miles of roads, miles of sewers, miles of water. We are, you know, we, we have probably not a whole lot more employees, but we probably have added a few. Wages have grown, you know, John, you're asking about valuations and, and they're skewed. Go back on, go back on the valuations we had for the wages. We were talking about how skewed they are this year, because this is one of those years we're in because of what I think COVID and everything else we've gone through and are trying to adjust back to. I mean, I, I think it's really important that we, as a council, try to have comfort that we've done the best we can with the numbers. And that we are trying to provide the services we believe we're being asked to provide. And we defend that this is what it costs to run the city the way you've asked us to run it.
I know that um, I, I don't have a lot of conversations about this, because I try to avoid them, because there's so too much information that isn't out yet. But one of the things that I was told one day, and I told this fellow that, one in particular, who is a realtor here in town and should know better. He said that his, the valuation of his house went up, you know, a lot. I, I can't remember what it was, you know, sixty, eighty percent. And I said, well, aren't you pleased with that? I said, wouldn't you be upset if it went down eighty percent? Because that'd mean, if you go to sell your house, you're not gonna get very much for it.
Right.
He didn't answer that.
Yeah, if you're selling, you're happy about it. Um and we get the same thing when we talk about, you know, development, redevelopment projects. We get people coming in saying they're scared that their property values are gonna go down because they're considered blighted. But then a year later, after a project, I get them coming in complaining to me that their property value went up. Well, I'm like, well, we don't do that. That's the assessor's office and that, you know, that means your neighborhood's probably improving, which is the point of redevelopment and improving neighborhoods, so it's a double-edged sword.
And what is the percentage approximately that the city utilizes out of the property tax bill? Is it sixteen, some reason sixteen percent's in my head?
We're about fifteen percent of the total property tax consolidated levy. And again, we provide all those great services that um are needed.
I think the school system takes what, sixty-one?
They're closer to seventy percent.
Seventy, okay.
Any other questions? I'll move on to the next item on two E. And that, I was going to jump down to the personnel requests. Again, the history of the one percent, the history of the half percent. Um if you have questions about those, it's really just the same content that has been in the budget year over year. It's just the history of the sales tax. Um personnel requests. So for park and recreation, here's some, three summer positions which have been included, one police officer, which has been included. And again, a couple of years ago, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with Columbus Public Schools. Um year one, they paid fifty per, we have two school resource officers, SROs. Year one, they paid fifty percent of one, and year two, they paid a hundred percent of one. So basically, we're increasing this, but we've created that revenue through the MOU with the school to pay for this position. Um fire and rescue, three firefighter EMTs, and I've included fifty percent of that cost. So um halfway, approximately halfway through the fiscal year, we could add on three uh full-time firefighter EMTs to start preparing for the Charlie Lewis Station being manned.
Can we get summer help for ten dollars an hour?
So we talked about that last time, and Tammy has done um some comparability studies, and I've talked to Doug about it, so we're working on that, and we'll have some latitude um to work that's around number. But again, it's a double-edged sword. I hear we pay too much, and then I hear we pay too little on the summer help. So we've gotta find that happy median, so we'll continue to work that, but this is a, a good budgetary number to put in the budget.
Long as it's a budgetary number, all right, thank you.
I, I see your, the summer positions aren't on the pay scale, but a lifeguard is on a paid scale. Isn't that considered a summer position? Or is that your, you know, you're paying that person thirteen ninety-four, so?
So we have lifeguards year-round.
Right.
Because of the Aquatic Center, so they're on that.
Addition to what we use at the plant.
Right, right. So we have several different seasonal position types and different pay rates, and then we have the lifeguard, which is
It's not, that's not reflected in the pay scale.
No, they're, cause they're in the summer seasonal. They're not in our full-time pay schedule.
Yeah, cause that's, I got chewed out because we pay too much.
Oh, yep, see, we hear it both ways. Um and then the last one is water utility operator, and we did include um one new position in the water utility. Any questions or other comments on that? Okay.
Right, we don't need a motion on this, and it'll be included in the budget hearing. I think then that's everything, unless anyone else has any comments. Then our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.